Okay, I'm going to call the meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order for Monday, March 24th, 2025. Present at this time, Mr. Andrews, Mr. Kimball, Mr. Blas, and myself, John Goldrosen. This meeting is being recorded to satisfy the requirements of town meeting.
Here we come.
Right on time. And Mr. Jones is here, so we now have our fifth member.
Good member.
The requirement of town meeting that all town board meetings be recorded and the recordings are posted on the Whitman-Hanson Community Access website and TV site. So our first case is 23, for 23 Jerome Street. This is case number four of 2025. Type of location, 23 Jerome Street. Type of district, Residence A2. Type of structure, an existing dwelling with a proposed addition. Owner's name, Ashi Hagen-Miller and Enid Shin-Ying Law. Owner's address, 23 Jerome Street. When did you acquire this property? March 10th, 2023. Has application been filed with the town clerk? Yes. Has any previous appeal been made? No. Section of bylaw of which relief is requested, section 240-6.5, rear setback variance. Reason for asking relief? Applicant wishes to expand the bathroom that is located at the rear of the dwelling. Present lot is pre-existing, non-conforming lot created in 1956. This case was advertised in the Whitman-Hanson Express on March 6th and March 13th. Sitting on the case will be Mr. Jones, Mr. Andrews, Mr. Kimball, Mr. Blas, and myself, John Goldrosen. This time we'll have the reading of the list of abettas. We do have an abatta here.
Due to the lack of the...
We do have an abatta here, but I'll still entertain a motion to waive the reading.
Yeah, waive the reading of the list of abettas.
Okay. Second, Mr. Kimball, all in favor? Five oh. Okay. Oh, we asked that anyone participating in this hearing raise their right hand and take an oath, essentially taking testimony and please join in. Do you solemnly swear the evidence you show given this matter should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, would you identify yourself for the record and just explain what it is you are proposing to do?
Yes, my name is Ashi Hagen-Miller, owner of the property in question, and wanting to add a bathroom addition. The existing bathroom is located in the middle back of the house, and so that is the natural place to put the new addition. It also, I think, keeps the whole appearance of the house neater by not having a strange thing on the side. And I just realized, learning about zoning more recently, that my lot is kind of strange for what the zoning appears to be written for. It seems that the zoning in Whitman is generally for lots that are deeper than they are wide. My lot is bizarrely very, very much wider than it is deep. And so I think it would be appropriate to be able to have a variance from the zoning restrictions here, especially considering that the lot to the rear of my house, it's a, I'm abutting the side of that lot, not the back of that lot. So on their side of the property line, they would only have the much smaller side setback, whereas it's the rear setback that's much larger, larger being the five to two of me.
How close, what is on the property behind you, the 712 Plymouth Street?
It's really just...
Is there a house?
Just forested. So the house, I mean, the house is on Plymouth Street, so it's quite a bit of ways.
And so there's really nothing, I'm really getting at, there's really, there's no structures, there's no backyard or anything right behind your house?
Correct, yeah. They didn't clear their backyard that far.
Okay. And what is your backyard like? Do you have a fence or anything of that?
I don't have a fence.
Okay.
Like I said, it's just sort of natural fencing from the growth and that.
Yeah, okay. Okay. What, I just want to check here. Let me just, I want to see what the rear setback is because if it's already non-conforming, so...
Oh, he's at 30, he's at, he was only 35 to begin with.
So, the house is already non-conforming, so that means he doesn't need a variance, he just needs a finding. Mr. Jones, I just go into a little more detail for everyone's benefit, so when you're, you're already too close by the rear setback under current zoning, and it's just a little bit different standard that, which is actually an easier standard to meet, all we have to decide is that the addition will not make the building substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing building. If you needed a variance, we'd also have to find there was something unique about the shape of the lot and so forth, but I think all he needs here is, is a finding from the board. All right, let me read some letters into record, into the record from town boards. We'll then have questions and comments from members of the board, and we'll go out to the public for any comments or questions you may have. From Whitman Fire Rescue Emergency Services, Whitman Fire Rescue and Emergency Services has no issues with this proposal as long as all applicable fire and building codes are met. Sincerely, Nicholas Grasso, Fire, Deputy Fire Chief. From the Board of Health, Whitman Board of Health has no objection to the petition of Ashi Hagen-Miller and Enid Shin-Ying Law for rear setback variance from section 240-6.5 for a proposed bathroom expansion to the rear of the existing dwelling on a pre-existing non-conforming lot for the property located at 23 Jerome Street. The town of Whitman's water sewer mastiffile indicates this home is connected to municipal sewer and water. Sincerely, Daniel Kelly, Health Agent. From the zoning, from the building inspector, the building commissioner, Robert Picarelli, he could not be here tonight, but he sent us a letter. I've received and reviewed the application for rear setback variance to expand a bathroom located at 23 Jerome Street requiring relief from article six, section 240-6.5. At this time, I have no objection to this proposal. All applicable building codes shall be met and will be necessary for a building permit to be issued by this office prior to construction. Respectfully, Robert Picarelli, Whitman Building Commissioner. I don't have anything from the planning board, was there?
They recommended favorable action.
You recommended?
Favorable action.
Favorable action, okay, thank you. Okay, comments and questions from members of the board? Mr. Jones?
Not at this time.
Okay. Mr. Andrews?
Yes, do you have a single story or do you have a two?
It's a single story.
Single story, there's no second floor?
No, it's just a single story slat ranch.
That's all I have, Mr. Jones.
And so the addition will also be a single story?
Yes.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Mr. Kimball?
Mr. Chairman, I think this is a favorable action because the lot that's behind it is a very oddly shaped lot, and I don't think that they could develop it anyways into anything else, so I would recommend favorable action.
Okay.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Blas?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to point to record is Mr. Swallow, Louis Swallow, 712 Plymouth Street. His name is on the abettas list, we was notified, and I'll ask if he's in attendance here tonight. Okay, for the record, he's not in attendance, but he is, he is listed and will serve the abettas list, abettas warrant or whatever you call them, notice.
Okay, all right, and anything else, Mr. Blas?
That's all.
And where is the driveway on your property? Is it to the right or left of your?
It's on the left hand, left hand side of the house, yeah.
Okay, so there's nothing going on there. And again, just for the record, how many rooms are in your house?
It's a three bed, one bath.
Okay. And a living room or kitchen?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And so you're expanding the bath or doing, what do you?
So it's, it's to be a second bathroom, so the current bathroom is, is very small, it's about 35 square feet. And so it's to be essentially the primary bathroom. So the primary bedroom is in the back right, the rear right-hand side of the property.
Okay.
And so this is directly behind that, to be the primary, primary bathroom.
So it's going to be like a master bedroom with a bath at that point?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. All right. Okay, at this point, I don't have anything further, I think, you know, this is, doesn't seem to have any impact on, on anybody else. So I'll go out to members of the public, sir, could you give us your name?
My name is John.
Well, I, so if you came, I mean, if you're in favor of this, that's fine, we just...
Okay.
What is, what is your name and where do you live?
I live in front of his house, 30 Dun, Jobstood.
Okay.
Across the street.
Across the street? Okay. And you're fine with this?
Of course, yes.
That's, that's all I wanted?
Yeah.
We, we do pay attention to what the neighbors think, so, okay. And thank you for coming. Anybody within, you know, a certain radius of the property gets a notice in the mail, so that's why you were notified about, about the hearing. All right, anything further?
Is there any, is there any benefit to granting a variance in addition to the funding?
I don't think so, because whatever decision we give you, after it's turned into the town clerk and nobody appeals it, you have to record it at the registry of deeds before you can get your building permit. I think just using the word variance, even though it gets granted, kind of can create a red flag to a later owner. I think you're better off not, I mean, if there was any doubt about what relief was needed, we could give the variance and that's, but I, but I think under the circumstances we'll clearly identify that, again, the setback is, required setback in this district is 40 feet?
40 feet.
40 feet, and the, the house is currently 35 feet, so, you know, it's clearly in existing non-conformity. When, oh, when was the house built, do you know roughly?
Like 1959.
Okay, so just before zoning came in, okay. All right, anything else? Then I'm going to close the hearing, and I'll entertain a motion which would be a finding, well, just noting that this is an intensification of an existing non-conformity, allowing an addition that will be approximately 20, 28 feet from the property line where the house is currently approximately 35 feet from the property line. So I'd ask for a motion to make a finding that the addition is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure.
Second.
Mr. Andrews, second amendment. Mr. Kimball, any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh, we're all set? Thank you. Carol has, I noticed the explanation, the process to give you.
A little funny, what did you next?
Yeah, yeah. You'll get the, hopefully get the decision filed with the town clerk in about a week. You then have to wait 20 days to see if anybody appeals the decision, and then you can get a copy from her or the town clerk, put a statement saying there's no appeal, and then you can take it to the registry.
Okay.
Okay, good luck with it, thank you.
One more.
Yes.
For smoothly without you.
13 minutes. Now I have a leg work.
So, since we got, oh, yeah, I might as well pass this out at the end of the floor.
Mr. Chairman, do we want to do the minutes?
Yeah, I'm just going to pass out the plans for the next case, and then we'll do the minutes.
He's gardening, tithing.
Yeah. Dick, I won't even hand you there yet. A list for this.
That's when I first...
Yeah. Glad we had this involved in this one.
I don't think I've fired about that.
Oh, wait.
No?
Oh, wait. What the hell?
So this is just past the casket, it's across the shoot from the casket. I need to realize that he's...
This seems curious.
Yeah, okay, okay.
This would be more significant than the, to the fire department than the previous one. Maybe stick it. Okay, so since we have time, let's take care of the minutes that are outstanding. So I have the minutes for case number three, 455 Franklin Street, site plan approval for the use of the property for storing insulation. And let's see, so it would be myself, Dick Blas, Wayne, and we're the only three who actually sat on that case who are here tonight.
I'm moved to approve case number three minutes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, that would be three of us, Mr. Andrews, even Mr. Blas and myself. And the general minutes, so all five of us are here for that, so all five of us can look at that, this includes a summary of our discussion on 185 Franklin Street.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second? Motion by Mr. Kimball, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Blas? Anybody need any more time? Okay, all in favor? Five oh. All right, so we're done with that. And I'll suggest to go over the schedule going forward. So next Monday night is the hearing on Steve Egan's project on Harvard Street, and again, we're, I'm pretty sure we're the only five who can make that meeting, so everybody, oh, good for that, okay.
That might take more than one night.
It might, yeah. And then we have, we have a hearing scheduled for April...
14th.
April 14th.
What?
April 14th, that's the Bedford Street, we're there instead of the car wash that was being planned, instead, apparently that's, project is dead, and they want to have, somebody has a used car lot across the street, wants to move over there. I knew that would make you happy to...
At least it isn't a new one. It's already existing, it's all across the street.
And then we...
But then somebody, somebody will take over the one he's got across the street?
No, that's, we just don't put those two buildings up.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why it's out of it.
Yeah, he's being, he's being kicked out, kicked out. And then we just got a new case.
One Standish Avenue?
One Standish Avenue, which is an addition to residential.
For the garage, right?
Yeah, it's...
The garage?
It's out a while ago, they just submitted.
I picked it up today.
Yeah.
Where's Steve DeShaw?
It's off of Plymouth Street.
Plymouth Street, down by Bayberry?
One of those short streets across the street, proposed attached garage, so that will be May 12th, so second Monday in April, second Monday in May.
I got asked tomorrow if we could use it, the 12th?
The room, yeah, assuming we get permission to use the room.
Here's one. Get that permission to use this room?
Yeah, yeah, they, there was, I mean, you should have done this a long time ago, every request to use a hearing room should go, the selectmen said, go through us because there was some conflict where two boards showed up the same, or something, yes, but, you know, in fact, no other board meets on Monday nights, so, so we're pretty safe, but...
The Board of Health has been meeting on Mondays.
Have they?
Yeah, 5:00, 5:30.
Oh, really? Okay. So, anyway.
They've only been doing this for 40 years.
She only has to tell, she only has to tell Laurie O'Brien, so it's, yeah, it doesn't need a vote of the selectmen, they just want to keep track of who's, who's using the rooms.
Nobody else speaks on Monday, except me?
Right.
I haven't seen the movie, but you ever seen...
Carol, there are none on Bedford Street.
I've heard Russell.
That's...
Another applicant on Bedford Street, but...
You turned up on it?
Yeah, I thought the guy came, but I didn't, it's for that home health care place, that's for the dance.
Yeah, we have a brother.
We have a brother.
Russell is, he's the star.
And, and Manti, can you get us a, send me a PDF or something for Steve Egan's?
Oh, yeah, PDF of that, like the colored site plan, you want?
Yeah, whatever you've got, I mean, you know, you submitted the big plans and I handed out some, some of those, but if you have those in a reduced format, it'll be easier to...
And the, and the unit plans, did you get those?
I don't think we even got those yet, so...
Oh, you didn't?
Yeah.
Because I told Steve to either get them to me or send them to you.
Okay, so, yeah.
There should be one of the, the big building and then one of each unit.
Yeah, I, okay. So, yeah, if you can email them to me, I'll send them out to the board members this week.
Is the big building going to be apartments or condos?
No, it's seniors, no, it's, they'll be condos, yeah.
Condos?
Yeah.
Okay, good enough.
All right, I just got to wait a couple more minutes before we can open the hearings.
After, after we're done, I would like to talk to you.
Okay.
We don't have time. It's not on the agenda.
Well, you have other, this is all the red and blue, you sleep separate.
It's cold in here, wait.
Well, you're supposed, you're supposed to get here an hour before we get here to turn the heat up.
Here, right?
No, that's very expensive for the amount.
Which year, hey, Joy?
500?
500.
It's, well, we got a mile of the road.
Yeah.
So it's a long way to go.
A lot, yeah.
There are snowbodies, 8,000 a year.
You say?
And that landscape is 8,000 a year.
I can understand the landscape, but the snow, geez, I'll be for half.
This year, last summer, we had, we had hit it, this year we did, it was a...
Oh, it included shovel, everybody watched, too.
Oh, yeah, everybody's watching.
I withdraw on it.
Yeah, it had a lot of little storms this year, which are just as bad as the big ones for the, you gotta send out the plows, whether it's, you know, four inches or 12 inches, and salt is...
Yeah, I think we had 12 snow services.
Wow.
Well, you, you get a half inch of snow, and if it's freezing, you gotta clean it up with salt there.
Yeah, yeah.
You see a snow blower and just...
I used a lot more salt around my house this year than last night.
I don't use salt. That's the scourge of Massachusetts, the salt and rubs. Why does every, all the states out west not use salt? They get them on fine, go to Colorado, Montana, the Dakotas, Wyoming.
Well, it used to be, you know, back, I was involved in the stuff back in the 70s and 80s, the push was to stop using salt, just use sand. Problem is, the sand gums up the drainage system.
Right.
So now they've gone away from sand and to back to salt, but being a little more prudent about how they use it, how much they use.
Now our all-wheel drive. Not many cars that aren't all-wheel drive anymore, or front-wheel drive.
It's a stopping, it's a problem, it's not the going. I had it on, a couple of days ago, by, by 35, there will be no more gasoline vehicles on the highway.
Both of them?
Yeah.
Not yet on my car.
All right.
Well, that's tomorrow.
Remember we're on, on you. Carl, we're ready for you.
I don't go forward, Michael.
Carl, we're all set?
Oh, you're all set, okay.
Yeah, 7:30. Are you all with the applicant or you, some of you are voters?
We're the applicants and they're voters.
Okay. You want the list, or?
I think we're...
All right. Shot list.
All right.
We'll see.
Yeah.
Location of property, 1207 Auburn Street. Type of district, limited industrial zone. Type of structure, existing office and garage with a proposed five bay garage. Owner's name, Heap Family Realty Trust, 2024. Owner's address, 2 Angler's Way, East Bridgewater. When did you acquire this property? February 22nd, 2024. His application been filed with town clerk? Yes. Has any previous appeal been made? No. Excuse me. Sections of bylaw of which relief is requested, section 240-7.2...
Shot list.
Let's see.
Yeah. Okay, I'm going to call the next case to order. This is case number five. Location of property, 1207 Auburn Street. Type of district, limited industrial zone. Type of structure, existing office and garage with a proposed five bay garage. Owner's name, Heap Family Realty Trust, 2024. Owner's address, Two Anglers Way, East Bridgewater. When did you acquire this property? February 22nd, 2024. Has application been filed with town clerk? Yes. Has any previous appeal been made? No. Excuse me. Sections of bylaw of which relief is requested, section 240 dash 7.2, site plan approval. Reason for asking relief, applicant wishes to construct accessory garage for the purpose of storage and repair of trucks and equipment used in the existing paving business. Said use being allowed within the limited industrial zone. This case was advertised in the Whitman Hansen Express on March 6th and March 13th. Sitting on the case will be Mr. Jones, Mr. Andrews, Mr. Kimball, Mr. Blas, and myself, John Goldrosen. This time we'll have the reading of the list of abutters.
The following list, um, is, following is the budget list for the property located at 1207 Auburn Street. Mark Rainey Realty LLC. Cherry Realty Trust. 1179 Auburn Street LLC. Joseph and Donna Graziano. Dorothy Aitken. JD Realty Trust. Boston Edison Company.
Okay, we ask that everybody attending the meeting and potentially participating in the discussion, if you'd raise your right hand and take an oath, do you solemnly swear that you haven't shook given this marriage the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
You do.
You too, Carl?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Mr. Gavi, you representing the applicant?
Yes, sir. Carl Gavi representing Heap Family Realty Trust, uh, 2024. Robert Heap, the trustee of that, is here tonight. The property is located at 1207 Auburn Street, within the limited industrial zone. The property is boarded on the north by JD Realty Trust, which contains an auto body shop. To the east is the Bedford Gas and Edison Light Company, which is a 450 foot wide Edison easement. On the south, by land of Joseph and Donna Graziano, who are here tonight as abutters. And on the, uh, west of, west of the side of the property is Auburn Street, and across from that would be the Watertown Vault Company. The Heap family purchased this property in February 24th. The property presently contains an office building with a small, small garage. Prior to them owning this building, it was owned by Auburn Construction for well over 40 years. That was a, uh, small construction company, didn't have too much equipment on site, but they, they were involved in a lot of big projects over the years. The Heap family operates a paving company out of the site and are proposing to construct a 50 by 100 foot, uh, five bay metal building. The building will be utilized for truck and pavement equipment, storage, and minor repairs. This use is consistent with other businesses in the area nearby. Voya Construction, J.J. Pool, Whitman Vault, uh, Craftsman Auto Body Shop, Wynter Trucking. So within this limited industrial area. The building will be set back in line with the present building, 10 foot off the existing building and in line with it. This area has been fenced along the Graziano property, uh, the Edison property, as well as the auto body shop. New stockade fence. The building itself will be tied into the existing sewer and water on Auburn Street with a new water line to the building and the sewer being connected to the existing stuff in, in, in the front. Roof runoff will be collected within gutters along the front and rear of the building and discharged into a dry well at the, at the back of the property to decrease any runoff that would be created by the, the roof. Dumpster will also be located behind the building. And so, uh, behind the building. The company, Heap Paving itself, employs roughly around five to six people. The secretary of the building and then some workers, so it's not a real lot of use to this property. As far as other trucks on the property, a lot of them will be able to now go within the, in the garage area. So it's not very detrimental to the, any new conditions going to exist on site that doesn't exist presently. So, myself or Robert, I'm sure can answer any questions?
Can you explain the, what the paving is on the property? Is it all existing? Are you adding anything?
The, uh, it's, uh, it probably shows better on this one here.
Yeah.
It's got dotted in, but the existing paving is, is basically this area.
The dock, dock, right?
The one, this here is an existing processed bituminous pavement that was created from grindings of other,
Okay.
other sites, which is basically, uh, how it's gonna stay for the most part. There may be some additional paving in front of the building.
Okay.
At some time, since he is a paving company.
All right, okay, that's, I didn't see the difference between the processed bituminous and the bituminous. Okay, okay.
I need a bigger glass.
Okay. And at the rear would be, uh, you're showing the trucks being parked at the rear. And where would the employees park?
Well, I have a couple out in front of the building, which would be, you know, the secretary and then some of the employees go directly to jobs or elements would take a truck and.
That's.
Place with the car.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask, I assume your, your employees come, leave their car and go out to, to the job sites? Okay, all right. I mean, there's plenty of room back there, so, all right. Okay, let me read some letters into the record from town boards and then we'll have questions and comments from members of the board. From the Board of Health, Whitman Board of Health grants conditional approval for the petition of Heap Family Realty Trust, 2024, for site plan approval under section 240 dash 7.2, as the applicant wishes to construct an accessory garage for the purpose of storage and repair of trucks and equipment used in the existing paving business. This is for the property located at 1207 Auburn Street. DPW records indicate that the current property is connected to municipal water and sewer. To receive final approval, the new structure must also be connected to municipal water and sewer. The board also advises the owner to provide to the Board, uh, Board of Health information as to how the business plans to dispose hazardous materials such as old oil or other materials from service and repair of vehicles. Sincerely, Dan Kelly, Health Agent. From the Building Commissioner, I have received and reviewed the application for site plan approval to construct an accessory garage to be located at 1207 Auburn Street for the purpose of storage and repair of trucks and equipment used in the existing paving business, requiring relief from Article 7, Section 240 dash 7.2. At this time, I have no objection to this proposal. All applicable building codes shall be met and will be necessary for a building permit to be issued by this office prior to construction. Respectfully, Robert Picarilly, Whitman Building Commissioner. I also have a letter from an abutter, so I'm gonna go ahead and read that into the record. Before we go further, uh, this is from Mark Donovan, who owns Watertown Engineering Corporation. I am writing regarding the notice for a public hearing on March 24th, 2025, regarding the petition of Heap Family Realty Trust, who wish to construct a garage. I will be out of town that day and will miss the meeting. If I were not away, I would attend. I am writing to support the request for the building of the garage by the Heap Family Realty Trust. I own the property at both 1198 and 1200 Auburn Street. My property at 1198 Auburn Street is directly across the street from 1207 Auburn Street. I base my support of the project on what I have seen of their operation. Since they took over the property from Auburn Construction, they've greatly improved it by cleaning up the lot adjacent to their building, putting up a nice stockade fence and installing a flagpole with the American flag, which is set off by nice landscaping and a white vinyl post and real fence. In addition, all their equipment is neatly and orderly stored. All of what they have done tells me that they care about and run a good business. As I mentioned, I will be out of town, but can be reached by email. Thank you for the opportunity to voice my opinion. Sincerely, Mark Donovan, owner, Watertown Engineering Corporation. Okay, uh, go out to members of the board for your comments and questions. Mr. Jones?
What are the hours? Typically, it does vary, but typically 6:30 to 5-ish, 4:30, 5. And you don't have any plans to sublease or any of the bays of the garage? Not immediately, no. At some point I might rent down the road, but it's not in the immediate future.
So if you did go to rent, you know, we'd consider that a change in use and you'd have to come back to us to, you know, get, get the okay for that.
Okay.
Okay.
And what's the height of the direction? I know the inside, I believe, is, uh.
30 feet, maybe?
19 on inside, but the, yeah, maybe the total of the peak would be 30, but I don't even know if it would be that much.
Yeah, I don't think it's quite that much neither, Ron. Those metal buildings vary and it could be anywhere from 26 to 30 feet.
Is it gonna have a peaked roof then?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So I have your questions.
Okay, Mr. Andrews?
I mean, there's no second, there's no second floor.
It'd be 6:30 to 5.
Approximately, yes.
How many days a week?
Five.
Five, no Saturday, no Sunday?
Very rarely at Saturday. I like to fish too much. My wife can attest to that.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Kimball?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, I want to say that, uh, they've improved the property considerably. You know, I appreciate that. I would like to see a little more landscaping, maybe along the street sometime when you get along doing that. Other than that, at this point, I don't have any further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Blas?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got a question about the side setback. This is limited industrial and side setback is 25 feet. It looks like you're closing at 25 feet. It looks like the existing building is closing at 25, and it looks like, so, I mean, it's in line.
It's, it's, yeah, I mean, I'm merely treating this as an accessory building, but the proposed setbacks of the existing building is, is 12. It's, it's kind of written in Graziano's property, the setbacks, cause you can't fit the number in when you have it. The front corner of the existing building is 12. The new, this corner here of the proposed will be 1214, and this is 1237.
Yeah, I'm not sure I would look at this as a, as accessory. This is like a new primary dome.
Really, yeah, I would agree with that. I mean, just from the size of it, so we probably should consider it as requiring a variance from the, uh, from, and what were the, 20, what's the requirement for principle?
Oh.
Regularly 25 feet, so, I, I think.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, this light itself is 100 feet. If you went 25 to 25 in the building, we're going to, would have to be in the, in the middle of the light. This light was obviously done before the.
Well, that's 150, right?
Oh, it was 150, I'm sorry, yeah, 150.
So that's, that's one question. Another question, so are you gonna create the two parking spaces in the front of the building?
No, they're there.
No, why don't we, they're there now. It's, I believe that's all grass and people park.
It's, it's gravelled?
It's gravelled, yeah, it's kind of, it is, I kind of have it as a different, it's, uh, processed material right here in front now.
It is, okay, it is now, all right.
Yeah, well, my survey has picked it up and they shut, shut the corners of it, uh, but it wasn't paved.
Okay, so, uh, so the drainage off of the roofs, um, will simply go into a dry well. What kind of drainage will be inside each of the bays? And what's the, um, what's the plan for capture of, of truck, uh, oil and grease and all that sort of thing?
Well, it's, and we have a, a gas and oil trap in front of the building.
Yeah, okay.
So what happens is that there's grates within, in front of all the bay doors. And they, they all run down and then they'll come out into the gas and oil separator. But then it's, it's tied into the stuff out front.
So if you're washing a, if you're washing a truck inside the building, that, um, that wire will go into the town sewer?
Yeah, after it goes into the gas and oil separator. Yeah, I mean, that's required, it's required in the plumbing code, actually, I think. All the buildings we've done, I think we've, we've done them that way.
Is the dumpster fenced in?
I don't make a note of that, but, uh, I mean, there is a fence behind it, but if it's early, it should be put on a concrete pad and then fenced.
It should be fenced, I'm just concerned about, about animals. Then, I'm gonna refer one, one last thing, John. The, uh, on that side setback, where residential area abuts, the minimum shall be 50 feet. And the next door is Graziano Residential Home. So, um, the zoning code doesn't say we're a residential district abuts. It simply says we're residential area abuts, so I would think that lot would be considered.
Okay.
So the, the amount of relief wouldn't be 13 feet, it would be 38 feet.
I don't think we've treated, I think we've always treated that as a residential zone, not a residential.
Yeah, well, this is the new wording of the code.
And frankly, I think it'd be better, you know, if you're gonna grant the relief, let's not leave any questions there because you go to sell this property to another owner and some bank might look at it and say, whoa, whoa, we can't touch that. So I think it'd be better to be on the conservative side in treating it that way. I think we can discuss the justification for it and so forth. I think it's a good point.
All right, so there's, there's one fence, there's one new stockade fence on the southern side of the proposed building. There's nothing other than the, um, the bituminous pavement, the grind that the property is sitting on in the back lot. And you're okay with that? I mean, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, there's a stockade fence that runs along the back and then.
There is a stockade fence.
And then it runs all the way down this property to about opposite this building here.
Okay, I didn't know.
Does it, does it run across the back or just along the, oh, okay, cause that's not shown. You have it, I see the.
It's right on the property, yeah, I mean, I, I label it over here, existing stockade fence, existing stockade fence, but it, uh, they actually goes across.
Across the back of the two? Okay, good.
Security reasons.
Good.
I am practically saying that, the fence goes along the back, doesn't it?
This post up, the fence isn't currently up on the backside yet because there was a bunch of debris that I had to move that I hadn't gotten to. But both sides, the whole length.
The whole length, yeah.
Uh, all the way to the end of the property.
You, you will be putting that fence in, all right? Just for, you know, kids riding dirt bikes and stuff?
Yes.
And so you would want that, otherwise I'll use it as a cut through.
Yeah.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. What actually is going to go on inside the building that you're constructing?
Basically, mostly storage, just to keep the stuff out of the weather and then occasionally maintenance, you know? I do everything out of house. Steve Wynter does all my big diesel repair and everything, so greasing, you know, maybe washing a truck, waxing a truck, doing minor repairs, but nothing major.
Okay.
Cause I'm not qualified.
And so is it mostly for storage of your materials then, or is it?
My materials, my truck.
Just to put the trucks in there?
Equipment, especially in the winter.
Okay, all right, okay. Yeah, I also had questions about the, having the new building so close to the property, not just the, um, are the Grazianos here?
Are they?
Oh, okay, you know, I'm gonna, normally we get down and then we go out to you. Oh, okay, you know, I'm gonna, normally we get down and then we go out to you, but I'm gonna, at this point, I think it'd be helpful to just ask you for your reaction to this and so...
One of the reasons we've kept the, the garage doors, you know, along this side so the building, you know, actually does act as a buffer zone. There's no activity going on behind the building. If for some reason the building was moved in fifty feet, you'd be parking cars behind there, plows behind there and also...
Well, I will say maybe before I go to the Grazianos, my concern was, I'm not looking to have it be fifty feet away, but where you've got an existing fence there, you've only got a few feet between the fence and the building, so I'm just wondering whether, you know, what do you have, five feet between the...
Well, there's twelve feet to the property line.
Right. I'm thinking a matter of safety and access more than anything else, whether, and I realize this visually, it makes some sense to have the building be in line with the existing building, but I'm just thinking if...
Well, it just, it really limits anything going on, on the back of the building, you know.
But there's enough room.
I mean, we've done that in other buildings where you've, we didn't even want to put back doors in the building because we didn't want people going out in the back. We did that at a couple squeezy buildings when we, and we kind of set it up similar to this. Especially, I know on Temple Street, we did that and a few other places.
But there's enough room to do the construction of the building?
Yeah, in the, in the...
The ten feet or so there?
I purposely stayed, when I put up the stockade fence, I purposely stayed like six or seven feet off the property line to give them some extra buffer.
Right.
Trees and stuff.
But that means there's only like five feet or so between your fence and the back of the proposed building. And that's my concern, is that too narrow for safety. We don't have a letter from the fire chief, so I don't know what, whether he would have any issues with that, but it's just...
Well, it's steel though, right?
It's gonna be, yeah, okay, so, all right, I guess it's not an issue for construction and whatnot, I mean, five feet is at least enough to walk, walk along it. But I wouldn't mind if it was a couple feet further in, let's put it that way.
I would move the fence technically back, but I can be convenient to the neighbors and approach.
Yeah, all right, so having said, let me just see if I had any more questions, but I think what the Grazianos have to say matters. Oh, can, Kyle Lading, first of all, do you need any other permission in terms of drainage? You know, state stormwater regulations or anything like that for this?
No, other than what the plumbing code, as far as that says, when you're doing repairs in garages, as far as the grates in front of the doors and all, and that's enforced by the plumbing inspector and we just went through that, I think, on a few other projects.
Okay, but when you were talking about the, the gas and oil trap, does that water then go into the town's, the sanitary sewer or the storm waters?
Sanitary, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you know, if, if we didn't have town sewer, then you would have to have a holding tank.
Okay, all right, okay. Okay, let me go out to the Grazianos and just state your name again for the record and...
Yeah, Joseph Graziano, eleven ninety-nine.
Yeah.
Don Graziano.
Okay. Honey, what do you feel about this?
Well, he's been a great new neighbor, I will say that. He did a great job with the fence and he did make a nice buffer. He didn't want to be like, right up against me, which I appreciate. He was careful keeping the trees that we still have on our way back. And I remember I used to talk to Auburn and he said it was grandfathered in his building. One time I was just talking to him, he was like, "But you know, I'm kind of grandfathered from your property." And I go, "Okay." I don't know if he thought I was ever gonna do offense or something, but, so I kind of knew that. And then he's just been trying to keep everything in line, I guess. My only concern was how big this garage was gonna be and I didn't want a second floor with windows looking into my, yet I have a built-in pool. We want our privacy.
Yep, no, that's why we asked. So there's no windows or anything in the back of the building? We have even like an emergency door on the back or did buildings like...
So we have, well, the overhead door and then the pass, there's a pass door for each bag, even though they're not out back. Not actually like condos down there we did before, so there's probably too many doors, but...
But there, but so there's a door on the back of the building, just as sort of a safety thing for each of the bays?
There's five.
Oh, oh, pass, pastor, you mean on the front?
The pass doors are on the front.
Oh, okay, okay, all right, and so you're not...
Are these separate, are there any separations or partitions inside?
I don't think so.
One big open?
If you, for now, it'd be one big open brick, that's what I want to hear.
Yeah, otherwise you'd need a second egress.
Right.
Okay.
As long as the door's within seventy-five feet of any place in the building, it's okay.
Okay, all right, okay, so anyway, I interrupted you, but yeah, there won't be any, anybody looking?
That's my only concern.
Okay.
But like he has a window in his building, I, we appreciate it. He's kept it closed since he's taken over the property.
Yeah, it's very...
Yeah, so he's been very good.
And what, and what is your backyard like then? It's, is it, how far back is it?
We are three oh six back, like we're all pretty much aligned, we're on one eleven by three oh six. Might be a little wider.
And how much of your yard is grass or pool or whatever?
The corners is clear, we have a nice open backyard.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you do want to preserve your privacy?
And we put a new ground pool from JJ's next door and we like our privacy on the street. But he's been very cordial, he's been a great neighbor.
Okay, and you understand how close the building will be to the property line and that's not a concern as long as there isn't any...
Yeah, as long as there's not a second floor with windows.
Right.
And I'm sure at first when we, this goes up, we'll be like, oh, boy, but, you know, it's because it's hard to visualize really, you know what I mean? Until something's built, but we're, we're okay with it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, yeah, at least it's not like, he's not tearing down the front building and putting something that tall right next to your house, it's just next to your backyard. Out of status, geez, nice to see an industrial building, a limited industrial zone actually being used for an industrial building, which doesn't happen.
Quite unusual.
We usually put, building something else there. Okay, anything further from members of the board? So I think what's needed here besides site plan approval is a variance from both the twenty-five foot side setback, because I would also agree that this, this is really becoming the principal building just by size alone. And in addition, a variance from the fifty-foot buffer requirement for an industrial building adjoining a residential area. I think, again, that's a conservative way to approach this.
Do we also need a, two principal buildings or two primary buildings on the same lot? Because that would, if we make the big one the primer, that means the, the existing becomes an accessory dome.
Yeah.
It really isn't, it's a office.
What, and what is, you know, it's, might as well put that in there. What's that provision?
While you're asking, look, Mr. Chairman, is Mr. Gabby a question?
Yes, please.
The water, it looks like there's two water lines in the street. Are you gonna go to the one that's in the...
Closest, so you don't necessarily get the new roof?
Thank you.
Oh, they have to go on the street, they can't just tie them, they'll need this to go?
I would take, on the, from the health department, they said they had to tie in. And do you have sprinklers in the building?
Yeah, that's one of the reasons, I, that's usually determined by the, the fire, he didn't, I didn't hear anything from the fire department.
I don't tell, we don't seem to have a letter. If we did, it's...
They were, they commented that, who's, the insulation guy down on Franklin Street, the fire chief commented, but he didn't hear.
I'm not seeing a letter from him. We had a letter on the first case, but maybe it just missed it.
It's, yeah, I mean, it doesn't come under that seventy-two hundred square feet that he needs to have sprinkler?
Okay, what's, what's the size of this building? Well, it's pretty, fifty by one twenty-five, which is usually one twenty, we keep it under. Then, then there would be, I have it tapped in in case he has to put a four-inch water main going in here, then he would just tap into the water, but it's not sprinkled that I, that I know of.
No, what we could say is take it up the street.
So we know digging up that street.
Did your, did the builder, did he say anything to you about that?
No, I was told that it was under seventy-five hundred square feet, he didn't need sprinklers, but I don't, I'm not sure about that.
And what, and how, what is it again, Kyle? Fifty by?
Fifty by one twenty-five.
So that's, 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 that's six thousand something?
Yeah, that's sixty-two hundred.
Certainly under.
Six-two-five-oh. Yeah, so it's, it's under the, that one, that has to be sprinkled. I believe that when we did White's on that fifth street, there were two buildings, a seven-unit building and a four-unit building, and one of them we sprinkled, the other one we didn't.
I'm just not remembering where the two building provision is.
What are you looking for, John? Two principal buildings?
Yeah, two principal buildings in the same lot. Okay, here we are, two forty dash four point four. No principal building shall be built except on a lot fronting on the street and there shall be not more than one principal building on any lot. So I think we should give a, a variance in that as well, which, you know, for an So that's, that, that would be the various, site plan approval plus variances from the side setback requirement, the buffer zone requirement, which is, I found, that's a footnote Yeah, in the, let's see, in the limited industrial zone, the sides, minimum side setback is twenty-five feet and there's a footnote to that in the table. This is six, two forty dash six point five. Footnote reads where residential area abuts, minimum shall be fifty feet. So we need a variance from six point five for both the side setback requirement and the special provision in the footnote. Okay, so that variance from four point four for the two principal buildings and site plan approval. Any further questions then for, before I close the hearing? Okay, and I think, you know, justification for that is partly the location of the existing building. Does that predate zoning, Kyle? Do you know when the existing building was put up there?
Nineteen sixty-nine, I believe.
So just let it slip.
Okay, because that's not twenty-five feet away there, so, but it'll be, it'll be in line with the existing building. It will, although it adjoins the backyard of the abuttes, it does not, it doesn't face their, their built, their structure and there are not going to be any windows on the back of the building.
Mr. Chairman, is there a problem with the separation between the two buildings?
That has to be ten feet apart and are you, are you ten feet apart, Kyle?
Yeah, I meant, it's like ten point five, yeah.
Okay, so that'll be maintained. I think the other, we just want to know, you know, for the record, that you will be installing a fence across the back of the property and that the dumpster is to be fenced. And, you know, hours of operation where this is, well, again, there is the, it's been represented to us that the hours of operation are, let's say, six, six AM to five PM weekdays and occasionally Saturdays and no operation on Sundays.
Correct.
Correct.
Would we be giving the variance, the side setback variance for the entire lot or are we giving it for the building?
For the building.
Should we give that same, for the front building?
No, performing.
Well, at this point, it'd be protected from enforcement because the building's been there.
It's in excess of ten years.
Yeah, there's a ten-year statute of limitations for buildings, so they're okay on that. All right, anything further? So I'll entertain a motion then for the relief as I, as I laid out.
Some moved.
Move by Mr. Blaz, is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. Jones, any further discussion? All in favor of granting the site plan approval and the variances? Five-oh, you're all set?
Welcome, welcome to Whitman.
Oh, you've been in Whitman a long time.
Yeah, my whole life, I grew up.
Is Terry your...
Terry?
Yeah.
Yeah, my sister.
Yeah, she's your sister.
Oh.
Played soccer for me way back when.
Oh, all right.
When she was a kid.
Poor thing.
No, no, she was great.
And we don't want you coming from the back lawn of your house to your, kind of switch backwards to your car.
I know, it'd be nice. Ever since the, when they had the railroad fourteen down Main Street to Highway, because no one would go down fourteen. Thanks very much.
Thank you. All right. Anything further, Mr. Andrews, did you have something on the record to...
Temple Street, my day. We have the, we have the handling property.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night. I'll send you that, Scott.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Tom.
We have the, the handling property.
Is that the one with the condos near Sportsman's Square?
Yeah, they came back to us four times.
Yeah.
They're a month beyond their one year, so they need to come back to this four.
Yeah, there is a, among the new laws that the state passed was essentially tolling special permits like they did during the pandemic when they extended the deadline and everything. And they did that for special permits and I don't remember the...
This wasn't the special permit, so we gave them a site plan approval.
Well, they must have had variances to that. Yeah, oh, so, oh, so, so they need to come back. So I have to check whether that was just special permits that the tolling was issued for.
He's got the minutes of the decision, I guess.
Do you have the minutes? What, what was the date of the dis, the case?
February. We had, we had two hearings.
Yeah, so what was the date that...
The twenty-ninth of, uh...
February was recorded.
February.
It was recorded the twenty-ninth of February, okay. It was recorded the 29th of February, okay.
This is the, near the end of.
Yeah, so if they wanted to, unless that state provision affects them, they needed to come back before.
The other thing is, I think somebody might be living there, because sometimes there's one car, and yesterday there were four cars there, and they have that trailer on the side of the building, but other than that, they haven't done anything to the property.
A realtor called me and said it was just approved for 10 units, and I said, we didn't just approve anything, that's when I looked it up and it was last year.
I'll have to bring it up with the building inspector, I mean, it's not really our call or responsibility at this point, but I'll ask, I'll ask him about it.
Well, in a, in a situation like this, when somebody hasn't done anything within that one year, doesn't this board, or could this board send them a letter saying they need to come?
No.
No.
Again, the problem for them is, so, Hal, this is, you know, for your benefit, maybe, maybe Bob Kimball too, I don't know if we dealt with it, the way, the state zoning law sets out different conditions for special permits as opposed to variances for what they have to do within a certain period to preserve their rights. And for a variance, if they haven't exercised their rights within one year, they can come back to us before that, the end of that year and ask for a further six-month extension.
Right.
And then we can't even give them anything more than that.
But they haven't come back to us?
No. But as I say, with this new state law that was passed within the last few months, you know, it's part of their whole development, then they may have told those requirements, they might have frozen those requirements, but I'm not sure. I know it, I know they did for special permits, I don't know if they did for variances, but I'll, I'll talk to, to Rob about that.
But can they use the excuse that there's somebody living there now?
No. No. Yeah, I mean, and they haven't, they haven't demolished anything, right? So the person, is the person living in the old house or?
Yeah, I don't know if they're living there or not, but then sometimes there's one car there overnight, another.
Which, you know, they could keep using it for, for a house, it's fine.
I just wanted to bring that up because I.
Yeah.
But if you're trying.
I'll bring it to Rob, but, Hal, again, so you understand, once we approve a permit, we don't enforce it, we're not like, like a planning board, when you approve a subdivision, you're still responsible for supervising the construction. We don't have that responsibility, it's the building inspector. And so the problem they run into if they're past the deadline is if they go for a building permit, he looks at the date of the variance and says, you're too late. But it's also a question, have they exercised it in some way? If they, if they started demolishing things, then you can say, well, they've, you know, they spent some money on this project, they, they're entitled to keep going, but if they really just sat on it and done nothing.
Just put a trailer on it.
That's, that's nothing, so.
Because the property on Washington Street next to the bank that they tore down, they did something with that property.
Yeah, so that's why we weren't.
But the, the bar next to the.
The office.
The office.
Yeah.
They haven't done anything with that building.
Yeah, so that's another one where, you know, if, if you don't move to construct something, that usually means you've lost your rights, unless, you know, if we give a variance for, to divide two lots and they actually divide the lots, you know, regardless of whether anything's built on it, well, they've exercised the variance, they've taken advantage of the relief we gave them, so.
If, if you're going over stuff with Rob.
Yeah.
Yeah, ask him about that, about the cemetery too, you know, my.
Yep. And I have another, actually I have another one to ask him about, which is, there's a new house going in on Dewey Ave off of Alden Street. And it's like, you know, these old lots, again, another one of the new state provisions was to make it easier to build on these old lots that are, that we all thought were merged. The state has unmerged them and you now can, can build on those. And the house that's going up is just a couple of feet from the property line now, to the sideline. Now, I think that's, that's allowed on these old lots because they're not only exempt from the area requirements, they're exempt from all zoning dimensional requirements. I remember this came up with.
Well, they existed prior to zoning.
But not this new house. Yeah, but I remember it came up with, when they built at the corner of Beulah and Washington, that triangular lot. And I remember talking to Bob Curran about it, we kind of talked it over and.
Does that go in the folder, that paper?
Yes.
Yeah. And they wanted to build, again, very close to a property line and it was like, his hands were tied, but he was able to kind of jawbone a little bit and.
Carol left you a minute to say what you're getting.
Oh.
He was able to kind of jawbone them into moving it a little bit, but he actually couldn't enforce setback requirements, normally, could you not enforce the area requirements? He couldn't enforce the setback requirements, but I'm going to ask Rob about that, that house, just because it seems, just seems harder, closer to the lot line than this new building is going to be, than the industrial property, so. All right, anything else? Then I will enter, so we have meetings next Monday, we need everybody and then.
Carol, we're going to be here for three hours next week.
We'll see.
You'd expect.
And then April.
No.
Second Monday in April, second Monday in May, we'll do further meetings. All right, motion to adjourn?
Some will.
Move by Mr. Kimball, second, Mr. Andrews, all in favor? Meeting is adjourned.